Okay, I'd like to call toward tonight's special meeting of the Board of Finance for tonight, Wednesday, March 20th. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just start off with a couple administrative matters. First, as we mentioned last night at the public hearing, there was a procedural glitch. The charter requires that the public hearing not take place less than 14 days before the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting had been scheduled for, is scheduled for April 1st, so working backwards, public hearing should have taken place on March the 18th, one day sooner. We have consulted with town council, and he has devised that it's a de minimis breach. So, the dates for the annual town meeting remain as April 1st, and the referendum remains as April 11th. Lessons learned, we'll just kinda make sure we're always looking at the charter and move on. Second announcement is that we have the school renovation groundbreaking ceremony on April 11th, so either after you go to the referendum, you can dig, or before you go to the referendum, you can leave.
It is during the day, it's at 11, because we want to incorporate our students in the ceremony and make them a big part of it. So, but if anybody would like to come, just let me know, and we'll make sure you have a special seat and we'll recognize you.
RSVP and Dr. Carver by end of business tomorrow?
Yeah, if you could let me know by the end of the week, that'd be great.
Is parking an issue?
Probably, but you can park for the middle school.
And part of the reason for the deadline is your own personalized construction helmet and shirt. All right. First substantive topic on the agenda is the consideration of minutes and approving three, excuse me, four sets of minutes. So why don't we start first with the Monday, February 25th, 2019, 6:30 PM minutes. Give everybody just a minute to look through those. All right, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes for the February 25th, 6:45 meeting. Again, give people a moment to read them. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the March 4th meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, so moved.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Last set of minutes for the Wednesday, March 6th meeting. Moved to approve.
All seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're done with minutes. Second item, second substantive item on the agenda is the deliberation from last night's public hearing. What I thought we might do is, as we've done in prior years, kinda start with each individual's sense of what they heard last night. Dee, you had a prior commitment, so we'll start with Brian.
I think it was kind of as we expected, you had people who came out to support specific items, and then you had some people who came out against the budget. There was really no shock. It was pretty standard. I had five no's, and the rest were looking to restore money to the board of ed. I heard a lot of that. So, basically, I took a meeting.
Cynthia?
The public hearings are kind of odd, because they're not populated necessarily by the entire breadth of the voting public. And, you know, there are people who are motivated to come out. It's a town meeting when more people come out and voice their opinion, so, I mean, I heard a lot of support for the budget. I heard, you know, some issues with the budget, but the point is that, you know, if you derive some sort of meaning from that, that's great. I don't think that, I think it's similar to the turf field where a lot of people were mobilized to get t-shirts and come support the turf field, and it gave the impression that there was a lot of support for the turf field. And I don't necessarily think that at this percentage increase, no matter how you explain it, I just don't think, I don't think that the voting public is going to approve it. That's just my opinion.
Voting public is not going to...
Approve it.
Oh.
That's just my sense of it.
What?
I was just going to turn out, I was hoping to see more people, and to get more variety in responses, because you always see the same faces, and you know what they're gonna say. So it wasn't as helpful as I had hoped it would be.
Robert. Couple observations, I think that we're trying to do a little bit better job with our presentation to try to focus people and give a better understanding of what the issues are, what they're up there. But even with what we, we've kind of evolved from last year's bar graph to this year's charts, whatever, I still think there's a lot of confusion out there. And I'm not sure that I have a good solution as to how we make it a little bit plainer, but I think that, you know, you know, our finance people are a little geeky, and I don't know that we quite communicate as well as we should in getting the word across. So I think we need to keep sensitive to that. I think more and more people are getting it, but I still think there's a gap. And that's just the people there at the hearing. I mean, communicating to the wider public is a whole different issue. I felt, you know, as echoed by my colleagues, that sure, you know, you know the people that can come out there too high, you know some people out there too low, there were some people that were, I don't know, ambiguous, neutrals, and I put them down with a circle and a line through them, you know, are you for or against. They were there for inquiry, and that's fine, you know, public hearing, we're kinda there to hear them, but I think it's also an opportunity for them to ask questions, which they did. So that was okay. I also echo Claudia in saying, I thought in terms of the turnout, there wasn't anything sexy. There's nothing sexy in this budget. There's nothing, there's no turf field, there's no, oh, let's, you know, rah rah. And I felt that, you know, we all know, we all sat here, what, a week ago, and said, 522 just isn't gonna be appreciated. You know, we were looking for something under the magic five number, and didn't get there before. And I think that we're at high risk going to the referendum as 522. I think that it's compelling for us to take another swipe at the, at the budget and see if we can do something to, you know, look at that 499 at least, at that level. And I think that would be a much better position for us to get this budget passed in one swipe.
Wendy?
Ditto for all. I did want to commend you, I thought you did an excellent job as our chair, explaining things. I do wish it was better attended. I do think, you know, you're right, we should take another look at the budget. I wish there were overwhelming support by the masses, or overwhelming non-score. You know, just like a little bit more clear cut, but I think we have a direction to go tonight, so.
Yeah, you know, synthesizing all those comments and combining with what my observations were of last night's public hearing, I think to Cynthia's point, right, the public hearing crowd is not necessarily fully representative of the referendum population. I think what we've seen is, it tends to be a little bit more pro-budget. And so I think, you know, we do need to take that information and try to do an extrapolation to the more general public. And I think we all have a sense that we need to maybe cut a few things. I have some recommendations. Once again, I did not get a good night's sleep. These are not easy decisions, very difficult, but if we're trying to put a product in front of the town that is responsive to the folks who did come to the public hearing, and from the vibes that we all get from talking to people in the town, I think we need to take out some arguments. So I am going to make a couple recommendations, a few recommendations, and then we'll discuss each one and see where it goes. My first recommendation, Department 450, the Board of Education, I'd recommend taking another $100,000 from the increase, so that the new increase number will be... the new balance will be 46,365,473. The increase will be 1,249,191, 100,000 less than what's currently the difference.
If we're looking to get to like a 499 or something like that, what might be helpful for me is just to know what's the dollar amount to get to a 499?
Before we, before we do that, since you've made that motion, can we get that motion second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
It's about 165,000.
So we need to cut 165,000 in total from the town budget to get it to a 499?
Yes. Okay, so discussion. Yeah, I'm sorry, you have a, you have the motion and the second?
Yep.
Yeah? A little discussion.
And I don't know if this is like the time, I guess personally, you know, I had floated the idea of dropping capital non-recurring to its current level, which would be a $150,000 cut, not really a cut, it would just maintain the level. At the end of the year, I'm pretty sure our tax revenue that we collect is gonna be above what we budgeted for. Our, you know, our reserve is really good right now, I think you said we're at 19 million or something like that? So, I mean, I would say on the first whack, if we're really just talking about getting out to 499, do a neutral idea that we know we'll have the money to buy these items, and, you know, we're not really, I mean, if that's the number that we're agreeing to, it's a way to do it where we need to find $15,000 after that. I just think it's a fair way to do it, because we're gonna have the money, we know we're gonna have money left over at the end of the year. And I understand your point, we wanna stop paying the credit card. We are, in a sense, we're just doing it rather than transferring the money to the general fund this year, we'll just take it from there at the end of the year and purchase the items that we need.
You know, and Brian, you and I can sit down with Bob, we can go through the numbers. Unfortunately, the fund balance is not enough to pay off the existing short-term debt, it's just not enough. The capital non-recurring is fundamental to our pay cash, stop using the credit card initiative. I can tell you, it's a finance matter, that it's clear that we have to stop buying things and not paying for them, using the credit card. It's short-sighted for the town to not increase that number. We need to get, if, if we had been building up capital non-recurring earlier, we'd be able to pay cash for those boilers instead of having to now borrow money. If we had been doing capital non-recurring, we'd have some money to buy fire apparatus, right? But now, we don't have, and to reduce the capital non-recurring is going to continue that false dependency on short-term debt, which is just fiscally improving, but we're not reducing that. We're keeping it the same. Right. However, as you know, we've got over a million dollars worth of projects that are earmarked to cover that 650,000.
Again, we're gonna have a large amount that's supposed to transfer to the general fund, that could make up that 150,000.
But doesn't pay off short-term debt. We should go through the numbers so that you fully understand that.
I understand, I understand what you're trying to do, but my, my only point is, is that we don't have to do it all at once. And to just, you know, randomly say we're gonna cut the board of ed 100,000, we're gonna cut this, I mean, I just think it's a viable alternative to see if the budget's gonna pass. And, you know, what do we do if the budget doesn't pass? Then is capital non-recurring on the table?
Deal with it then, yeah. But I do think, and we heard it last night at the public hearing, that we folks understand the concept of get off debt, stop incurring money on the credit card. And reducing capital non-recurring is continuing the credit card. We, again, we can go through the numbers so that everyone understands that in detail. The excess that we incurred this year, or hopefully we earned this year, again, is not enough to pay off our short-term debt.
So, so Brian, it sounds like, because the board of ed cut is what's on the table, right?
Yes.
It sounds like you're concerned about doing that, I have concerns about doing that. So...
Should I talk about the impact of that?
Oh, can we not?
I have a small question.
That's what I was gonna ask, is before I would be able to, with a good conscience vote at that, I'd like to know what that looks like in terms of cuts.
Any other discussion?
This is a peripheral in a way, but I thought that it, that it was a good point made that the town side did not show the percentage increases. The board of ed is very carefully laid out, it had the increases for each line item, but the town didn't. So I'm just requesting that we get that for the town meeting, and then we get a little more detailed revenue. So that's just a general thing, it's not specifically to this. But I will say, when Brian, last time, he recommended, you know, reducing all the accounts by a certain amount, I also took Tim Bevel's point, and, you know, it just seems that there's really no tangible way to acknowledge departments that really keep their budgets in line and who are committed to that. And like, for instance, I'm thinking that maybe to have a certain amount or percentage to reduce any account that, if an account is .5% plus or zero, to leave it alone, and then to, you know, if you have to carve out something else, but to not touch accounts that have only a .5 increase or less. Does that, do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So Cynthia, based on that, then Board of Education would certainly be under consideration in terms of what you're just saying, just with clarification on your thought.
I don't think it can be avoided, but, see, I understand, as I said last night, that the board of ed has a completely special situation. It has so many impanglements and so many requirements, and I'm always, every time I come up against talking about it, I just feel like, you know, it's not, it's not even fair to talk about it. So while I emotionally would never want to cut, ever, I just think that it can't be avoided. And, you know, I don't know how much, I don't know, but I do, I do think it's very complicated, I wish it wasn't as complicated. The town budget's much more straightforward. So, I mean, I wouldn't go there first.
Dr. Carver, you want to?
I think this is, or Brian wanted to start, and then I'll, and then I'll pick up and talk about specific impact. So, after last night's comments, we, we felt we needed to explain to you the impacts of cuts. So as we're talking about 200,000, which has already gone, and potential additional cuts, we just want you to know a few things. First of all, we are mandated to do a lot of things, so we don't have choices, so those cuts we can't make in those areas, right? We gotta educate kids, we gotta provide interventions, we gotta graduate them, we got ESL kids, we got SED kids, we got kids in poverty, all the special things going on, so a lot of challenges. And people move in and out, so in the course of a year, things change, our dynamic changes, our pupil numbers change, and maybe our specialized kids change, and our numbers change drastically. So we have mandated things, and those can't be cut, Cynthia was referring to. So though you've cut the 200,000, we have to find, we still have to find ways for a new EL teacher, because that's state mandated, and we gotta find one room, money for a new history teacher, because we've got graduation requirements we will not meet.
World language.
I'm sorry, world language. And I'm gonna have Dr. Carver and Cynthia to discuss the potential cuts and where they would come from at this point. Any cuts, of course, are subject to board of ed approval, so we're just discussing options here. But we also wanna make, I wanna make an observation as, on behalf of the Board of Education, that we have an amazing team here in Bethel. We certainly don't pay the most, we have a lot more challenges than a lot of other districts, but we have amassed tremendous talent with our educators, with our principals, with our administrators, who do amazing work, and we ask them to do a lot with less, all the time. And at some point, it starts to erode, we can just keep this up for so long, and we really feel like we're reaching a tipping point here, where we can't ask people to do more, and we're gonna start to lose these people. They will say, well, now the town's not supporting our operating budget, what's next? So I, I have this very real concern that, that things are gonna start to, start to fall apart if we don't watch carefully what's happening. And the other thing, I just wanna observe, and this is, I guess, stating obvious here, but that Bethel is growing, and you can't expect with the growth of the tax base by a million plus, not to have to put investments into infrastructure to support your police department, your emergency services, your schools, your roads, everything. I mean, that's just all part of growth, you can't take the good and not have to pay. So, and yes, as part of that, we're getting some new students, and we have to service those students. So we have, aside from the mandated things, which we really can't touch, we are very restricted by what we can do, but I just wanna point out what a valuable asset to all of us as property owners and taxpayers and business people are, our district education is, the quality of education we have with our diverse demographic, we compete very favorably with surrounding towns, that we not lose sight of that, as, as I know you're making very difficult decisions. And now I just want Terry and Dr. Carver to explain a little bit more about the challenges we're confronted with.
So, with the 200,000, so with that, knowing that we already have that cut, and knowing, and I said this last night at the town meeting, knowing that we are going to have to hire those additional positions because they are mandated, and quite frankly, I can't have a middle school with classes of over 30. It, I can't do it. So what that's going to mean is that I'm going to have to cut other positions to be able to compensate for that. And I think, I hope you know, that if there is a way to do it, I will find the way. Like, I move people all the time, and I try to find different ways to use people to compensate so I don't have to be here in this situation. That's just who I am. And I can't do it anymore. So what I think, I, and again, this is board of ed decision, so, you know, so then we have to start looking at class size, like at elementary level, and reducing class size, and that's potential layoffs of teachers. We have to look at enrollment at the high school and different courses, and reducing staff there, because I can't go to the mandated programs. And it's not the mandated programs necessarily that the public loves. So then we have to look at extracurricular programs, or, or non-mandated programs like preschool. Now, I will tell you, that preschool has a huge dividend, because we know when we get those kids, we are less likely to have special ed issues later in life, and we're less likely to have other issues, because we provide preschool in this town. And, and so I could go back, we, we were at five sections, and then with a, with a loss of the ECS money, we went down to four, so we were all of a sudden not servicing a whole bunch of kids, and we were able to go back to the five sections. I could cut a preschool teacher and not offer that services. Long-term, you're gonna have problems, because it's, you're gonna be paying for it in specialized costs. The other thing we can look at are programs that people love, like music. They're not, it's not mandated.
Excuse me. Probably gonna pass.
Yeah. Our strings program, our ROTC program, you know, our, our athletic programs, our theater programs, but it's, it's part of what we, and we, to be fair, we can take some money out of supplies. And so it's not just the cut, it's the additional positions that we have to add on, which also have to compensate for a loss. I don't know if I make it clear about that.
Well, those additional positions were in our original budget. Now that, now that the, it's pretty much the amount of money of those additional positions that has now been reduced. So we have to find a way to...
To make it up.
Move that chessboard around, and there will be other positions taken. I spent, I spent time today with the Johnson School principal about the cleanliness of her school. Without that custodian, we just keep, honestly, we keep moving the problem around. And, and I know that that's one that we won't fill.
Absolutely.
Because, because if it comes down to an EL teacher and a custodian...
We're gonna have EL.
We know our purpose is educating kids. So, we are, we, you know what? We know how to make, we make the tough decisions, we've had to make them before, we'll make them again.
We will.
But the 200 is, we feel is...
Is enough.
Is a challenge.
And, and so, and then you add the, roughly, because if you have three certified teachers that we need, and the custodian, that's about 200,000, right Terry?
That's what it was, yeah.
It's about 200,000. So you're really talking about almost 400,000 that we have to deal with, because we have to hire these positions. To be fair, we don't have to fire the custodian, but...
We don't have to.
We don't have to. But, but, so it's, it is even more based on that, and that's my concern, and, and I can't lie to you, I don't know that it's not gonna affect people.
Dr. Carver, you say that the 100,000 additional cut will impact positions.
Oh, it will.
Well, the 200 is impacting...
Various positions in the 100,000?
The 200 is impacting positions.
Yes, I understand that, because we saw the four positions.
Correct.
Exactly. I'm talking about right now on the table, the 100,000, is that, is that, how many positions is that?
Well, it's at least two teachers.
It's two teachers.
It's at least two teachers. You know, we could look at like increasing pay to play, which just...
Doesn't go over well.
Just puts the burden back on, so I...
Well, you said supplies, pay to play...
Correct. Of course, we can look at those things.
Some of the extracurricular.
Correct. So there, there are some adjustments we can make, you know, and that's gonna, quite frankly, happen within the 200,000 already, but then we have this dilemma with the additional staff that we have to have. Yes, Brian?
Are there any areas in the 460 account that you saw that might be deferable to offset, you know, a cut to your budget that would get us down to the number that we want to, but, you know, and again, obviously, I know a lot about maintenance, and I'm the guy who takes care of my stuff, but, you know, are there any items? Because looking at it, like I said, it's the same as last year, and last year, we were dealing with a few more schools. So this year, so is there anything in that account that you say, hey, at least give me some leeway here, so if you're serious about taking 100 from education, I'd like to see you take 30 from this account, you know, 'cause I think I could, you know, get time out of this, because we are renovating two schools to new, right?
We are.
You want me to tell them the truth?
Well, you, you get to tell them the truth.
We've been playing catch-up, we've been playing catch-up for a lot of years, okay?
Well, we're about 120,000.
We're 120,000 over...
Right now.
Right now, in maintenance this year, because we're still playing catch-up. And, and one of, one of those large items, a big chunk of that is, is the valve replacements we had to do at the middle school, which I am... we had to do at the middle school, which I am gonna bring to do out of the one percent count, because I can't find another hundred and twenty thousand other places to cover it. So, um, we keep trying to catch up, and.
So, the only areas that, that, you know, the, I don't, I don't have the budget with me, but the part where, things that we, projects that we wanna do for the coming year, um, I forget what section.
There's a, there was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, which was projects in the other three buildings. And, um, twenty has been reduced, so now it's, it's a hundred and twelve thousand of, of projects that can be done in the other three schools, and.
Some of them are safety issues, um, absolutely. It, it's kicking the can, and I think that the issue.
And we've done that for a long time.
And I think that issue becomes that if you go, if you keep kicking the can, it just, the problems get, you know.
Bigger and more expensive.
Bigger and more expensive.
Okay, we have to upgrade a fire, a fire panel.
Panel.
At, at the, at the high school. There are some repairs that need to be done to the bleachers at the high school.
And their code issues.
And we have, um, we have to finish the repairs, um, because of the gas leak.
We had a natural gas leak, I don't know if you know, I had to send the kids home one day. And that was, we found out why, it, it was actually because of some, again, I think this is a renovation issue.
So, so you're saying, like, out of the four hundred and eighty thousand?
Most of it, most, most of it is service contracts and, and things like that.
There's a little bit.
But there's a hundred and twelve thousand of projects, and we really, we, we, we probably took a quarter of what the principals asked for. We just said, what, what things absolutely have to be done. We have to do, um, a safety code review and repairs of the project adventure at the middle school. If we do not do it, because they have new state regulations, if we do not do it, they will, they will not, they, they won't use it. They can't use it.
And some of the things, Brian, to, to your point, we, we, when we, when we already identified the twenty thousand dollar cut, like, do we have to replace the carpet and bury? No. So, that's where the twen, part of the twenty thousand will come out of.
Right.
So, we are, we've already kind of gone through this list to see what are safety issues, and what are things that we can, we can, we can push off, kick the can out of here.
So, no, I can't say that we could find it out of the four sixty, not, not at this point.
No one's, no one's happy about this. I think we're all, frankly, sick about it. There is no more important place than education to spend your money, right? To educate the kids who will be doing battle with developing countries, because they're on social security. It's, it's that simple. What I spent a good part of, I guess technically it was this morning, thinking about, is whether this district is fully supported, or supporting as much as we can, given the time we have, or the time we're in, the school system. And so, I just started adding up the, the, the support. With the one hundred thousand dollar cut, the increase in operating is one million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. In addition, there's a million dollars being spent for high school boilers. Now, we're up to two million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, one ninety-one. In addition, a debt service, somewhere between seven fifty and more, a debt service to the school renovations. I add the seven fifty. Can't do the quick math, but it gets grown, right? We also have a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the high school track resurfacing. Those four numbers, four items, add up to this district supporting the school system to the extent of three million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. It's a lot of money. I pull back, and then I try to look in a broader scope. Granted, it wasn't because of taxpayer money, rather, it was through the tremendous generosity of benefactor. We also have an eight million dollar field house coming up on it. You know, there were costs to the town for that, right? We had to give up the land, the lease, take on future management. It's eight million dollars. I add that to the three point one million, and that's eleven million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars that this district is dedicated to support our school system this year. So, we're kinda arguing the eleven point one versus one hundred thousand. And frankly, I know, but we all know how hard that's gonna be. In my business, please don't take this the wrong way, people who do what I do well live by a saying that pigs get plump and hogs get started. I worry that we're being hoggish by saying, district, we're giving eleven point one million dollars of value this year, and we're dicting over a hundred thousand. That, it, it, that upsets my stomach, frankly, and I just don't know if we, as a board of finance, can hand on heart go to the town, say we, the, the one hundred thousand outweighs the eleven point one.
So, I'm sorry.
Any more question?
You're including the eight million dollars that was donated as part of what the taxpayers are contributing?
No, no, we have a benefactor in town.
Just that, this, I don't understand how that fits into a tax conversation.
It's saying because of the bene, it wasn't cost, it's not costless to the town. The town had to give up the land. It had to enter into a lease arrangement. It's taking on future maintenance. All I'm saying, it's an enhancement to our school system. So, if I'm sitting in a school system benefit evaluation, I say to myself, I'm getting eleven point one million dollars of benefit in this year. And that's a big number. All right, if you don't wanna take, if you don't wanna take the eight, and we're just talking taxpayer, it's three point one million. Still a big number.
It just doesn't buy teachers, it buys boilers, it buys.
No argument, Dave. As we know, we've talked about how difficult this is for everybody. We, every, every department's gonna tell us there are costs to this.
The other thing I think we do need to be really clear about is, um, the resurfacing of the track. If no one else used that track, then I would say it's solely a school cost. There's a lot of people who use that track in the community. You know, Parks and Rec regularly has it on their schedule, Board of Ed has it on their schedule. We need to figure out who owns that, because if we're charging that against the schools, then, you know, that would mean just the schools benefit from it, and that's not the case. So, that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I just think we need to be clear where that sits, like, you know, I think there's a lot of people who come six o'clock at night, they're walking around that track, who have nothing to do with the school, which is fantastic, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying to charge that against the schools completely, just, in my personal opinion, doesn't make sense.
Um, that actually isn't really accurate, because that would be like saying the Park and Rec who put forth the lawnmower, that, that's being charged, well, attributed to them, but yet other people benefit by it. And there are a lot of overlapping things, especially Park and Rec.
Yeah, I agree.
And education, so.
And the buildings, use of the building, certainly, and not a hundred percent school. And there are town resources, so you're right, there's a lot of overlap.
It's one town.
There's, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Right, and I, we have always thought about having just two-sided budgets, being divisive, it's unhealthy. But when, I think when we try to look at it holistically, in a very difficult, with a whole lot of difficult decisions to make, we look to who is getting what benefit, and then have to move on to the next department, figure out what's going on there, if we're really trying to get to it with everything that counts.
What was the percentage of the little under, you're talking about?
What was that?
Removing the hundred thousand.
Percentage?
Percent, it's, it's about a quarter percent.
A little, little less than a quarter.
So, point two-two percent or something like that.
Yeah, point two-one-five.
So, that would bring the overall increase on the Board of Ed to about four point seven. Six, I mean, two point seven-six or something like that.
Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion on the floor. So, last, the, the motion is.
Do you mind, um, if we table this motion?
Yes.
You do mind?
Yeah.
Or you, okay.
Well, well, but, all because we can be at all night.
Right.
We know we've got two sixty-five as a target.
One sixty-five.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, in echoing Wendy's advice, I'm wondering if we could discuss, you put forth one proposition, rather than voting one at a time, could we look at the whole picture and then make individual motions?
Yeah, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, 'cause that's why I think coming out of the game, doing something where we need to look at the.
Now, this, some, these were numbers from a discussion Bob Key and I had. Again, trying to get to one sixty. If we get to one sixty, the increase in the spending would be four point nine-nine percent. Four items, one hundred thousand out of four fifty, twenty-five thousand out of one sixty, professional services.
Okay, so can you make that motion?
Well, I think they wanna talk about.
But you don't wanna discuss it?
No, no.
Okay.
We just wanna hear the.
And we still have a motion on the floor, but we haven't voted on it.
Okay.
So, professional services, one, uh, Department one sixty, subaccount fifty-three, fifty-two, legal fees down twenty-five thousand. The new balance would be one sixty, which is about ten thousand higher than previous. Third item, Department four oh five, intra-government agencies, the five-three-six-six subaccount, paramedic intercept, down twenty-five thousand. New balance for that amount would be two seventy. The new balance for the entire account, four forty-two, one thirty-two. And then the fourth was the library for three, excuse me, uh, Department four thirty-five, for fifteen thousand dollars. That adds up to one hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, how much was the library?
Fifteen thousand.
Is it one sixty-five? Twenty-five plus twenty-five plus fifteen is one sixty-five.
Good point, yes. And in one sixty-five, is it one sixty-five to get to the four ninety-nine?
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh, four point nine-nine-five.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, we need one sixty-five.
So, is that a motion to discuss those four?
No, no, I think you just wanted to hear what the fourth answer that I was still working on.
I did, but you understand what, what I was saying, and I think maybe Wendy was saying, is that we, we wanted to hear all of it, and then discuss all of it, and then make the decis, this decision. So, I didn't know if that was the whole discussion on the table, as a motion to discuss all the components of what to discuss. That's my question.
Or could it be?
Yes, that's the question, is that what you?
Fashion emotion of that.
Right off the bat, I would support the legal, and I would support the, um, the, uh, paramedic reducing those.
Can you explain to me, though, what happens by reducing the paramedic intercept by twenty?
That's what I wanted to ask you to do.
I'm just curious, how do we get away with that?
Well, we raised it up this year, because the, we were pretty much at a break-even point last year, and the last two years, so, uh, that increase would have been used to pay back to town for its debt. Paramedic intercept program owes the town, I think it's around six hundred thousand dollars. But it's gonna take a long time, and twenty-five thousand a year to pay it back.
Um, Bob, um, the professional services, what is the prac, the practice if that goes over budget? What, does it use sometimes, and what do you do?
At the end of the year, we do the transfer.
Right.
And we always have another department that can support that difference. Either employee benefits, or insurance account, or whatever it is.
Okay, well, then, to the chair, I'm thinking that, then, take that out of, rather than taking out of the paramedic intercept, take fifty thousand out of professional services, because I don't think taking twenty-five out of the paramedics is gonna be very well-received in the public.
Yeah, but the twenty-fives is just to pay the town out, they've set out a break-even program. So, the program supports itself, the twenty-five thousand.
Correct, sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, they owe the town six hundred thousand, so they're setting us to a short payment.
We increased.
Am I correct?
You're right, you know, we, we increased it this year to try to eat into the deficit that this program owes the town.
Was that the entire amount that we're going to use to eat into the deficit, the twenty-five thousand? Is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, that, there wasn't fifty, it was just twenty-five that we had.
Yeah, whatever was left over would go against the program.
For receipt of all of the books. Bob, are there any other, uh, lines or groups that still owe the town money for?
Transfer station owes.
And how much do they owe?
I think that's four hundred thousand, right, Brett?
Four hundred on that. Uh, paramedic, at the end of twenty eighteen, over four fifty.
Four fifty, and then the transfer station, sixteen.
And how much in the transfer station budget is allotted, or is that just come from fees that they take in? To the fees or?
Yeah, that, that's from the, the fees, that's, that's pretty much a break-even point now.
So, are we allowed to talk about other things, or is there, are there just those things on the table?
It's just discussion, it's on the table.
We have a motion. Transfer stations.
Well, if this is illegal, just tell me. So, I know at one point, we had had a discussion about, um, police overtime, and what was the amount that actually needed to stay in that account versus what could be covered by other, you know, police accounts. Did we ever finish that discussion? I don't recall the resolution.
We didn't take, we didn't take any money out of the, I think it was ninety thousand for the dispatch overtime.
Right, 'cause that's necessary.
We reduced the, uh, other account of professional police by, I think, seventeen thousand, which was equivalent to the increase that we were looking at.
Yeah, the point of reference that I had for these suggestions was the five-and-a-half-hour meeting we had here, when we went through everybody.
Yeah, no, sorry, I just didn't remember what, what was the resolution.
So, my colleagues, were there any other areas other than CNR that, that were, I mean, at one point, we talked a blanket reduction, but, uh, I think it was pretty well explained, you know, considered that of the thirty-eight account groups, a lot of them are not even possible to just reduce by a percentage. You can't reduce paying your debt, you can't reduce paying insurance costs. So, were there other areas which, um, you thought there was areas to reduce?
I thought, I already discussed part of it, capital not reoccurring. I think is a logical place to take some money for, if you don't wanna do the full one fifty, even a reduction of twenty-five thousand is meaningful at this point, with everything we're talking about on the table. I think some of the new programs, you know, in my opinion, do we need to do every new program in the proposed budget? Or not, you know, I mean, we're still increasing programs. You know, I listened to what a few people said, and I agree with the budget for a percent increase. It's just not fair to take from them, because they have the line, right? So, you know, I've said it before, you know, I'm sure all the spending that people want, you know, has a use. It's just what's the stomach of the town gonna have. Uh, you know, after, I'm being completely honest, after last night's meeting, I have no idea. I, I honestly, it was the strangest meeting I've ever had. I just, I couldn't. I couldn't figure it out. So, you know, I thought I would have a much clearer picture going out, but do I think there are other areas that we can cut? Yeah, and I think we're gonna have to, if the budget goes down.
Well, that's a good point, right? Let's remember, this is just a first step. If it does go down, we'll need a second one.
But to Robert's point, there is nothing here that's compelling people to get either irritated or excited now. It's just the percentage increase, so people aren't gonna be running to the. At the public hearing, you cannot really base anything on that public hearing, you can't.
So, is the town needing that data that we could use to?
But it's already there.
It's already there.
You can't add anything to it.
Unless it gets voted down at the town meeting, but that's never happened.
Yeah, you could only decrease it anyway, you can't switch things around. It's already done.
I would throw out taking a little bit more out of, um, police overtime, maybe ten or fifteen out of police overtime, and use that to reduce maybe a hundred thousand to the board of debt. You know, if you take fifteen out of police overtime. You know, if you take fifteen out of police overtime, reduce a hundred thousand to the board bed.
Now, did we, I thought we took some time.
I do think so, but they still, uh.
Twenty-five.
Out of police overtime.
But they had forty more, or they had requested forty.
What's been there, I thought we took it down to what they anticipated would be the overtime. Well, Captain Pugnay told us that, that the level we were funding it, there's no slack in their OT. And that they have year after year incurred that amount, so.
It's not the, it's not the slack we don't want, though. I would argue that they're not spending their money on the overtime. What I would ask is what's the saving on the other lines of salaries? Because you normally have people injured, you have guys leave, girls leave, you have people at bottom step. You have, you know, different levels of pay, like, you know, you can't really do it to longevity, but I'm sure in the longevity account, you know, not everyone's at twenty, you know, something plus years. So, my longevity compared to a summer of five years is much different. You know, another account that kind of stuck out in my mind is, you know, we had five thousand for fertilizing the police lawn. Really, what's the effect if we cut it down to twenty-five hundred and kept it green? I mean, it's twenty-five hundred and savings. But just being honest, there are other spots where we can save money, I feel. You know, if you're telling me, you know, I have a choice between, you know, losing a teacher and the police lawn, losing twenty-five hundred bucks out of five grand, and it might not be as green, and I'm not being prass. I'm just being honest with you, I would look at that and say, well, that might be a cut we want to look at. That's why I asked you guys about your four sixty account to help me and say, you know, maybe there's a couple of things here that we can throw in to reduce the overall effects. Because, again, and I'm just being very honest, I think the board bedside has a much better chance of passing than the town side. I just, that's just historical, and we know that. So, I just feel every cut made, you know, is a meaningful cut in my, in my, in my mind. Because, you know, once these things get going, you know, even last year was kind of an anomaly, right? The first budget goes screaming and then it passed. You know, it's, it's, it's really a tough time to figure out what's going on and where people's minds are.
So, I just thought of something that maybe there's a way to take smaller amounts out of, you know, what's commonly known as supplies that would add up to a significant thing. I know that the supplies is not just, you know, whiteout or pencils, I know that, but maybe in various departments, there could be a smaller cut that would add up to a more significant amount. And you, look, I'm usually slash, a slasher. I just don't feel slashy about this budget, but I also know that the five, the five point two may can fly. So, I think we, I think we have to be very careful about the amounts and the departments that we reduce from.
If we didn't have the increase in debt service and where it's going next year, and basically, you know, Bob said it last night, we're going to see increases in debt service over the next set of years. So, we're having a tough time with this budget. Next year's budget's going to be even harder, because who knows, you know, with the government's proposals of taking motor vehicle tax away from the town, you know, what's that, like four hundred, forty thousand for us?
Four million dollars.
Four million, okay, so there's four, there's four million, you know, that we could be losing right there with the government's new proposals. They're talking about adding a one mil increase on all real estate in Connecticut over, I forget what the assessed value was. But there's a lot of worries, you know, coming, and I think that that's going to play into. Every cut is, is looking downfield, is what I'm saying. You know, I just can't look here, I'm looking next year, the year after next year. You know, chances are, we're starting at a zero, right? Because one point one million in additional debt, if, let's say, we have a great year on the grant list and it grows another one point one million, any additional spending is an increase at that point, we've chewed it all up.
These, look, all that is true. These are very challenging, very difficult times. And I feel it requires leadership, and that's us, to make some very difficult decisions. To lead the town in a way that five years from now, when people look back, they wonder whether we did the right thing.
Well, the people are looking back at their houses that they sold because they had to move out, I mean, that's another story too. But to Brian's point, also, there's, there's an attrition of the ECS overtime, that's just going to keep going down, down, down. And so, we are going to, let me just finish. Your dream, and I know your dream is to keep the recurring account up and to not use the credit card. But we're not going to be able to avoid bonding for projects in the future. Last year, I said the same thing, that it just didn't seem like the time to, to really propel that particular idea. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done over time, I just think that if you can get it out of that, it's sort of like, we've been doing this, you're making improvements, but yet you're not taking away from, you know what I'm saying, the whole.
No, I know what you're saying, I just don't agree.
I know you don't.
But, but for fundamental financial reasons, not philosophical reasons. We are at a point, and we look, it can be debated, right? But if we look at macro numbers, we look at state numbers, we look at local, regional numbers, these are good economic times. They just are statistically. We've got very little, very little unemployment, we have rising wages. Not, that's not subjective, that's objective. Is it, is it the case that everybody's participating the way we want them to? No, there are absolutely folks who are not. It just means these are the time, it's not, to your point, it's only going to get harder. And we're not going to be able to borrow short-term debt if we have too much of it. So, that's why we have to get rid of it. And why we have to fully fund the budget, so that when the economy does turn. And there's debate, will it be a year, will it be eighteen months, you'll pick, pick your economist, whoever. There will be recession, and at that point, it's really going to be bad. And we're not going to have the cushion to borrow money to get through that recession like these guys did appropriately in twenty-ten.
I totally get what you're saying. I am just really concerned that, you know, leadership requires followers. And if you're leading and people aren't following, which would be demonstrated by a failed budget, could be, then that's the decision that, you know, and I get it. It's like, I totally get what you're saying financially, and this is a board of finance. On the other hand, there's, there are people involved that, you know, that are living kind of the way this, you know, with, with not using the credit card all the time, but, you know, using it like that. They're not, they don't, they can't implement your plan personally, do you know what I mean? They can't beef up their non-recurring capital accounts personally.
We're dealing with the town, so.
I totally get that, but I, I'm just trying to draw an analogy. I get your point.
So, you're, what you're saying is, even though we have some economic principle, the fact that there are a lot of individuals out there that can't simulate that would be reason for us not to follow the, the program?
No, no, I'm not really saying that. I'm saying, I'm saying it's kind of a crap shoot, that this, it's totally sound, but like I said, if it's not, if it fails, if the budget fails, it's, it's not going to be, it's going to be because of something like that, I think.
But, well, the budget will fail because it's too hot.
Right, and so, but if it.
So, what you're saying, you're, you're against these cuts?
No, I'm not saying I'm against the cuts, I'm saying, do you, are you saying that with all those cuts, we would get to a point that you think would pass, the budget would pass?
It's below five percent of Tom, the spending, and I think the increase in taxes, not the two two four, which is more in line with kind of cost of living adjustments.
I just want to speak to Bob's question. I don't disagree that paying off short-term debt is bad, uh, financial advice, not at all. But in my own personal business, I have a certain amount of debt that I carry, right? I have to, that's part of my business. I understand that I might want to be at a certain place, but it doesn't mean that I get there all at once. My point is, and I'll, I'll rest it after saying it this last time, is that we still can get to that place this year, even if in a bipartisan way, we took twenty thousand away from that account, like we're saying. It's still quite an increase, you know, we're still talking about a big percentage. We're going to have the money at the end of the year to purchase some of these items. We might, we might not pay the short-term debt off as rapidly as you want, but we're still making strides in that direction. When I remember when I first came on the board of finance, our road account was in shambles, because previous administrations had just cut it down to nothing, the roads are fine, there were a lot of simple solutions. All I'm offering you is, and I don't want anyone thinking I think it's a bad idea to pay things for cash, I just believe phasing it in in a responsible manner when we're talking about, and, you know, I've heard you guys talk about reducing services and stuff like this, we don't want to reduce our services, we don't want to touch these programs. I'm just giving a viable solution to help soften the blow. Do I think the budget passes, like I said? I couldn't tell you, that, that was the strangest meeting I've ever been to, I've never seen a meeting like that. I've never, I mean, I, I didn't even sleep last night thinking about it, I was just trying to figure it out, you know, saying, wow, that was very interesting. And the lack of comments on social media, I've never seen anything like it.
Yeah, that was dead.
It's like, there's been no comments.
That was very.
So, I don't know what's going on.
Are you, are you in a position to say, we should go to referendum where we are?
I, I feel not, I feel that the budget has to be.
You kind of agree with us that we need to.
I agree that, oh, I absolutely agree that we need to cut from the budget, but all I'm saying is, is that I think part of that cut should be from capital non-recurring.
Would you, would you maintain that out of four fifty, we reduce that by, say, twenty thousand and then take twenty out of the four twenty account?
So, reduce the board of that by eighty?
By eighty.
By eighty. Yeah, I would.
Two eighty or by eighty?
Two eighty, well, you want to cut it eighty, that's fine.
I'm trying to get clarification.
What exactly is in the capital rate now, the capital number recurring?
Six fifty.
Six fifty?
Six fifty, okay.
I think you could cut fifty from that account and cut fifty from the board of that.
And that would be, get us to our.
That gets, that keeps us at that one sixty-five.
It keeps us at that one sixty-five. And, and again, my only point is, one of my reasons why wanting to kind of spread the wealth across the board was the library's budget, who's nine hundred thousand, right? So, what's a half a percent of nine hundred thousand, forty-five hundred? So, we just decreased their budget by two percent roughly, right? Fifteen thousand out of, out of a million more, what am I talking about?
What are you talking about?
The amount of the cut, so we picked one group and said, we're going to say fifteen thousand from you. By not spreading it out more equally, it's a much more devastating impact to a group like that than it is, you know, by taking small amounts, like I said, and I'm not picking on Parks and Rec, but taking out of five thousand, twenty-five hundred away from fertilization for the police department. That's all I'm trying to say.
That's what I was proposing, except for not to touch.
Because you want to make amendment to the current, uh.
No, I think what he's saying is you go through the.
Not the entire budget, but I mean, there's, there's.
And allocate, no, I think you want to allocate some percent.
Well, I just, I just think there's some things that stuck out in my mind. Fertilization was one. So, we're talking about five thousand, if we cut it down to twenty-five hundred, I mean, honestly, how detrimental is it to the PD's want? I mean, I don't know, I'm not a turf expert, I'll be honest with you on that.
It just wouldn't be done for this year, or it would only, it would be only fertilized instead of four times, it would be two times. You know what I mean, something like that, I mean.
Maybe we have to look at the percentages of increases, because my, what I suggested is similar to what Brian said, that we don't touch anything that has a zero percent or point five or less than that.
So, you say we should go through the thirty-eight accounts again?
Look at the big increases.
That we did over the six hours previous to that.
What I said was things that have stuck out.
Right, well, what sticks out in my, plus one hundred and sixty-one percent.
Well, I think we're doing, we're doing some stickouts, so why don't we put some dollars in accounts on the table here? I heard.
Well, we have to finish Bob, we have to finish Bob's motion before we go too far.
But, but we could amend his motion down from a hundred thousand to another figure based on speculation that we can find that money elsewhere. And I think I heard that, what if we take CN, fifty K from CNR, four twenty?
Yes.
And then reduce the impact to four fifty, by fifty thousand, so we're talking about a fifty thousand dollar cut, that's what I think I heard.
That's what I said.
And now, and now I'm hearing that, oh, there might be other places that we find some money, and so I'm saying, well, what is that? Or is, are there further cuts that we can, we can do so that we reduce the?
Well, I'm not, I'm saying, i- i- if, if we take fifty from the board ad and we take, you know, fifty from CNR, maybe a further cut like the PD thing just drives the budget down even further, doesn't it? It gives us an additional.
Exactly, and that's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying, it drives the budget down, it drives the budget down even further. That was a specific, that's one specific.
How much from the PD?
Not from the PD, from the fertilization line was five thousand dollars. I said twenty, twenty-five hundred away from it, you know?
That's Park, Parks and Rec, I don't want to count it, this is right.
Three eighty. It's account three eighty.
Okay, so where are we, about looking again?
We've got a motion on the floor to reduce account four fifty by one hundred thousand, let's vote on it, go ahead. So, all those in favor.
Well, see, I thought we could have a, amend that.
Amendment. Well, let's go on record with the one hundred and see where we end up.
Okay.
I think we counted out. So, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. I will say aye, I'm going to buy myself. So, do you have that, Dan?
Yes. Can we look at the road construction?
Well, I'm sorry, what was the motion?
To take one, to take one hundred thousand out.
So, I'll make a motion to take seventy-five thousand out of the board of that, realizing that we will find the savings someplace else.
Second. Although I thought we were talking about fifty.
Yeah, it's still one and a half teachers, right? Should do fifty as one teacher. Yeah, he made a motion.
Okay, so, I'll just, we got a motion, crystallize the motion?
Thank you.
No, no, don't say it. I didn't hear.
Oh, it's, it's reduce four fifty by seventy-five thousand rather than the hundred thousand.
So, yeah, reduce four fifty by seventy-five.
No, yeah, by seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five.
All those in favor, please signify.
Can we ask a question first? If, if you're going to take seventy-five out of the board of that, having thought, given some thought to what Brian said earlier, if you take fifty out of the operating budget and the other twenty-five out of the four sixty?
Which, can you speak up?
That's, that's, that's saving a position.
Okay.
So.
So, are you taking fifty out?
Seventy-five out of the four fifty.
Yeah, I, I'm with that.
Okay.
But what's changed from fifteen minutes ago?
We, we chatted for a bit about, we, we'd rather.
I would rather have teachers teaching children and delay a project, just find a way.
So, I, I will amend my motion to take fifty thousand from the board of that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dan.
Amending a motion.
I'm amending it to fifty thousand. I will amend the motion.
I'll second that.
Fifty thousand out of which count, for four fifty, for five only?
Did, Robert, are you still going to second on that?
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion is made, seconded, reduce four fifty by fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
To make a motion to cut the twenty-five thousand that you recommended, out of what line was that?
Four sixty.
Four sixty.
Well, I was going to do the personnel services first, the ones that Bob, you recommended person, uh, legal services?
That's one sixty.
Professional services, one sixty.
One sixty.
One sixty is twenty-five thousand.
Line fifty, Department one sixty, line fifty-three, fifty-two, legal fees, down by twenty-five.
And I seconded that motion.
Any discussion? Also, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Does that mean we have to also do the total then?
You still have one more $25,000 cut.
No, but we did 160.
Bob, you could do the total at the end after you do these.
Not the total of everything, the total of the department 160. We, we reduced 5352 by 25,000, now all of 160 goes down by 25. So, we do that at the end, or we?
You can do whatever you want, you do now.
It should be now.
All right, so let's do that.
Keeps it easier.
I'd make that motion.
Second? What's the revised number? 226,080.
Is that confirmed down there by a controller?
Yeah.
By a positive nod? That seconded already?
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd make a motion.
Good, no, I'm sorry, I had one.
To reduce 405, intergovernment, by 25,000.
Sorry, and that's line item 5366? Per, uh, paramedic interception. We had it seconded, Dion, did you get the, the motion in the second?
So, Wendy, and then who seconded it?
Brian. Who? Brian. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And what's the new, um, total for 405?
442, 132. I make a motion to cut capital non-recurring by 25,000.
Can we just one second?
We have to do the, the total, the reduced total.
So I make a motion to, with the new total, the 442, 432? 442, 442. 442, 132.
132.
Second?
I'll second.
All those, oh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I would like to make the motion to cut capital non-recurring, uh, what's in the line?
50.
Yeah, um, by $50,000.
I second that one.
So, discussion?
We've got, it's department 420, unless it's 370. Sorry, I'm just very slow.
Cynthia, you say 50 on that, Brian, you had said 25.
Yeah, he didn't finish his motion, he seconded, so.
Well, I didn't get a chance to have a second, because I jumped on him. You jumped on him?
I said. And he, I took advantage of his 50.
I will not support 50, that's way too much.
It's department 420, 5374.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, just before you vote on that, I wanna, just as a reminder. The board of finance took the heavy-duty trucks, medium-duty truck, and tractor surfacing out of the original capital proposal and put it in capital non-recurring. That alone totaled 649,000. And we already had several hundred thousand dollars that were in there, including the VHS band uniforms, the, uh, the fire breathing systems, masks, radios. Uh, the radio replacements for the police department. Just want you to be aware of that before you vote, because we've got some serious things, serious challenges in that area.
The list amounts to 782,933.
Bob, can I just ask? Matt, to your point, I'm sorry, to your point, though, when our fiscal year ends in July, we could take money that we would've transferred to the general fund and use it towards purchasing those items.
Yes, we could.
And we would continue to incur interest.
Then, yeah, that's an unknown, but yes.
Okay.
It's not like we can't pay down some short-term debt, maybe not as fast as you'd like to, but what I'm saying is, if we paid 200,000 out of the transfer to the general fund to these items, it's not gonna stop us paying down some short-term debt. For I, Bob, am I wrong?
Because you're, we already have.
Yes, he said it.
We already have a million dollars coming out.
No, the theory, what he's saying, we could do that, but we do have to go through the numbers to figure out how much we have available. That's the key.
Exactly, so you can't say yes until we know the numbers, and we know the numbers are bigger than, unless, okay, well, maybe I'm mistaken. So, we can maybe do as much as 4 million out of fund balance?
No, no.
Then the answer to Brian is no.
No.
Yes.
You're saying that if we spend 200,000 out of the transfer to the general fund, there'll be no money left over to pay down any short-term debt. That was my, that was my comment. Are you telling me that all we'll have is 200,000 and that's it?
No, well, yeah, you answered it then.
But, that money that we were planning on the surplus, we were gonna use that for the short-term debt too.
Right, but, but what I said was, if we took 200,000 of that, so if we had planned to spend 4 million on paying down short-term debt, and we used 3.8 million to pay down short-term debt, and 200,000 towards this year's purchases, we're still paying down roughly 90, over 90% of our short-term debt that we had planned on, correct? More than that.
But what we forget in that is, as you suggested, we wanted to pay for the boarders a million dollars out of fund balance. So now, we're both, we're over what we spent.
And the other thing you gotta remember is, we still have, we still have this year's capital plan that we gotta pay for. Uh, the sweeper, the fire truck, and the HPAC, that's 1.1 million right there.
Okay.
Out of capital non-recurring?
No.
No.
So that's all separate, that's a way.
That's the fund balance.
What's the fund balance at right now, 19 what?
About 19,400.
And how much are you expecting in surplus from this year's budget, roughly?
It's way too early to estimate that.
Isn't that quite high compared to past year's 19 million?
No, no, it's been, it's gone up.
Well, that's gone up.
Last year, it went up about 400, 300,000 dollars.
I'm thinking that when it was 16 million, like a couple of years ago, it was.
It was what?
16, like maybe three years ago?
Oh, it could've been.
Yeah, it was.
Last year, for you, I think, 18, it went up about 350,000.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I mean, that, that's, that's a very healthy amount of fund balance.
But we have to be careful, how far we take it down.
I'm not saying we should go on a drunken binge, I'm just saying that, you know, I think 200,000, to Brian's point, is not the end of the world.
Okay, so what, I'm sorry, um, I lost track. What's our?
Cynthia's motion, voting on my motion.
And that is to reduce.
CNR.
Department 420, line item 5375 by 50,000.
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
It's a lonely line.
Can, can we have a show of hands, so Dion can get the?
I got it.
There were two no's and, there were two yeses and five no's.
I would make a motion to reduce 360, is it, police, police overtime, um, I don't know the line number, um, by 15,000 dollars.
I'll second.
Believing that we can perhaps find that. In negotiated salaries, or maybe there might be some other savings in their department.
Line 107.
Line 107.
All salaries are together now.
Oh, 101. Oh, 101.
So, so it's 360?
Line 101.
5101.
So, it's in salaries, Brad?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Um, so we have a motion to reduce department 360, police salary, so account 5101, and I'm sorry, wait, one more time for the number.
15,000.
15,000. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, Claudia, Claudia, a second? Discussion? Uh, now, hearing any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Where are we with our?
115.
I make a motion, I don't have the exact.
Wait, we got to vote on the total for 360.
Oh, we do, okay.
They're at 130. So you said we covered 115?
I got 115, where's the 130?
Um, library was 15.
Oh, we didn't make a motion yet.
I know, but it's on the list of.
It's just what we voted on.
So we voted on a total of?
115.
115, okay.
So do we still have to vote on this line?
Yeah, no, we gotta do the total now. So, Brad?
Revised total is?
Revised total is 4,719,263.
So.
Second?
Oh. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion to amend the 360, 5101 to 4,179,263.
I'll second that.
Well, it's not the 5101, it's the 5101.
It's now 360.
Okay, 360, yeah.
Whatever Robert says.
Yes, 360.
Got it.
Forget the sub-account, yes.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I did.
You did, okay, sorry. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I make a motion to reduce, I don't have the exact line, Parks and Rec, fertilization of the PD, by 2,500 dollars.
Second.
No problem with that fertilization.
Well, do we know?
How green is your grass out today?
It's not a problem, it's a suggestion. Park maintenance and repair.
Yes, it's 206.
Oh, 206, yeah.
So 380, 5206.
And that account was already reduced by 7,000 previously by the board of selection, right?
I'm just being specific.
Five, but I don't think it was that one.
Five was in the other.
Board of Finance, Board of Stuckman did seven.
Seven out of maintenance and supplies already.
I think we all have to pledge that if the police department comes screaming at Eileen, we are going to support her and say, no, you only get it done once or a half a day.
You can call me, you can call me the grass.
There is no candy swearing on this board.
Well, Eileen, it's twice, though, instead of four times, right?
Well, it would, it depends, 'cause it's a large, it's two acres of property, so it could only get once, and it could, like, you know, it's, so, it's about, it's about 2,500 to do it, to do that property, so it's probably gonna end up being like once, maybe twice. So it could be a spring fertilization and then a fall.
Yeah, are there, so I'm just, so are there other properties where we might this year be able to do the same to get a little more savings?
Other areas in my account?
Like, are there other properties where we can fertilize twice instead of four times to get a little more savings?
Can I recommend a different account?
Yeah.
I, yes, I don't, I'm not even sure what the account is, but yeah, sure.
Could, um, because with hearing what everyone's been saying, could we take, um, just 'cause that's like my maintenance and supply account?
Yeah.
You know, you'd say fertilizing, okay, I'll cut that, but I still have to buy parts and stuff like that out of that account. Would be to take, um, out of account 313 Clark Park, which is 9,600 dollars, to have it mode by some, to contract that out. I would just eat that and have my staff have to do it.
That's a great, so that's almost $10,000 savings?
That's what I would recommend.
That's a solution.
All right, I, I amend my motion to. Thanks.
That's in lieu of the 2,500 dollars I was making.
I'm amending my motion.
Because we've already lost seven in that account as it is.
So I'm amending my motion, withdrawing my 2,500 dollar fertilization plan and removing the, what was it?
It's in account 313, 9,600.
9,600 for Parks and Rec. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 9,600.
Yes, from line 313.
Cynthia, you'd be too, and I'd be just 700.
Brian and I would be all picking up for us.
I'll do that.
What was the number?
9,600.
20.
9,600.
Okay, you seconded that, I'm sorry.
Cynthia did.
We have a motion on the floor to reduce department 380, account 5313, by 9,600 dollars.
Parks and Rec account, correct?
Yes.
My brain's not working, I thought it was police.
Uh, all those in?
Go ahead, sorry.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
So what's that bring us to?
124, 600, uh, let's see if they, math guys.
So Parks and Rec's new total would be 1,502,997.
1,502,997.
997.
You got it.
I make a motion to revise, um, 380 Parks and Rec to 1,502,997.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Make a motion to reduce the library by 435 by 15,000.
Cynthia, was that you? No, I just, I didn't say it.
Claudia.
Claudia.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to reduce department 435, it's just bottom line, by 15,000. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Who was the nay?
Me.
Nay.
So two, two no's?
Mm-hmm.
So a new, a new department total now?
No, it's a bottom line.
Bottom line, okay.
882, 492.
882, 492?
Yes.
Do we have to do a bottom line, since we only have bottom line?
We're done.
Yeah, so we took out the 15, which automatically forced to the bottom.
Well, that's the bottom line, yeah.
So we don't, we don't have to do a separate.
Just have to see what that number is.
882, 492.
882, 492, is that very much?
So Bob, what's the total now? That we've got?
What do we?
I was curious.
How much do you like?
One, I have 139,600. To be confirmed?
You, Brad?
Cut the same thing, Bob? Using electronically?
We're gonna, I don't have, it's not a number that's easily pulled up on my spreadsheet, so.
What, what did you have?
It's gotta be correct.
139,600.
Cause she didn't do the capital non-recurring, right?
Right.
And that's the 25,000 dollars, 25,400. 2165.
It failed at 60,000.
Right.
I'm gonna give it one more try, I make a motion, we cut capital non-recurring by 30,000.
Second that.
We don't need discussion, do we?
All those. Bypass discussion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Okay, why?
I might've passed.
There were four ayes.
There were four ayes.
Yep. Please, could you, one of the ayes?
Raise your hands if you were a yes.
The only ones with the ayes?
We had four ayes.
Delane, Ryan, and Cynthia.
So 30,000.
Thirty, yep.
So we're gonna do a total on CNR?
Well, you need to do a total on account 420.
Which is 1,000, 1,071 dollars. Wait, what, what account did you say that?
420 is charges and transfers.
420.
Yeah, so the CNR is, is it not, hold on.
We just cut CNR.
CNR is 370, but it's 420. So we had to do the 420.
Yes, it's 420.
420.
So...
It was line 5375.
I moved that we cut 420 to 1,070.
71 dollars.
71 dollars.
I'll second.
Is that right?
Someone explain that to me.
No, because they're right, because capital non-recurring's in that line. It's in that account.
It's in that account.
It's just a sub-account of that.
I got you, I got you.
It's line 5375.
Right, I just didn't put the detail. Yeah, I didn't put the detail.
No, but it's a million, it's a million less than 30,000, right, Brad?
Right, but something doesn't make sense, because the total on our sheet shows 700, there might be a mistake just on ours, it says the total was 700 what?
776.
That's the decent.
Okay, got it. We got, we had to move over. It was my fault.
So Brad, is the new number 970,000?
No, the 1,071 dollars was after the reduction of 30,000.
So this is updated real time?
Yes.
Ah.
That was my subconscious cloak from doing things.
So that's the motion, second on the table.
Wendy, second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Yes.
So could we got a new, um, total?
What, how do you want the total? Do you want the percentage total?
Yes, percentage would be good.
So it's 4.988 right now.
4.9?
Yeah, 88.
So that's under the five.
Correct.
So we don't have to do anything else. I'm not prepared to do it anymore.
Well, it's the...
Well, no, where are we gonna go if heaven forbid the budget fails?
Well, what's the mill rate increase at that, or what's the percentage of tax increase of that amount?
2.24, 2.24 percent increase.
2.24.
And what's the increase in the mill rate?
Yeah, what does that increase?
2.24. Percentage?
No.
What's, what's the... 0.73.
So what's, what's the new rate? 33...
3360.
60, huh?
Yes.
What's the cost of letting it increase?
Depends where you live.
Here?
CPI is like two.
Two flat?
1,900.
Okay, so are we done?
What's our new bottom line?
Are we gonna vote on that? I just, I just wanna say, I don't think it's quite enough, I think it's just shy of 5%, but I, I think it's still too high, in my opinion.
Where else did you go?
Well, that's the thing, I don't really know unless we did the thing, you know, across the board and, yeah, it's just my opinion, I mean, I know that it's probably not everyone's opinion.
But you have those percentages.
I, I, other than what I said about taking percentages off of any account that's over 0.5% increase, other than the ones that we've already touched, so I don't, you know, no one's gonna go for that, so, just weighing in.
All right, so Bob, you have the final numbers?
There's no motion on the 460 account.
I don't think we need it, unless you want to do more.
It's okay, it's good.
Uh, wait a minute.
So you took, you took 50 out of the Board of Ed, but you didn't take the other 25?
Right.
No, we, we, the 75 got lowered down, and we took 50 out of the 450. Right, they said that 50 from Board of Ed and 25 from 460, but if we're already under the five, maybe we don't need to go there?
Okay, now my number's agreeable, too, I, I thought they voted.
You have that in here?
Yeah.
There's no point, it's not gonna realize any great, it'll be like 4.9.
So what is the total?
21.
So I'm gonna make the motion to send those...
So the total town side is, which includes Board of Ed maintenance, and debt is 31,961,043.
But I believe that we have to break them out separate in the motion to...
I don't think so, because it's one line item in the budget on the referendum. If, if you want to do it, the, the, you can, you can, you can just cover it all. You don't need to, but if you want to just cover them...
We usually, they're all broken down that way.
Okay, well, then the town side, tell me if your, is it spread, I get 26,261,910. Yeah.
I have to repeat that?
26, 261, 910.
I would make a motion to, um, send the town fiscal year 1920, um, 1920?
2020.
2020, sorry. Um, to the annual town meeting, annual town budget meeting on April 1st, in the amount of 26,261,919.
I'll second.
I guess I... Can you just tell what the percentage increase is, Bob, or Brad, whoever?
So for the town alone, without the debt and Board of Ed maintenance, it's 4.64.
4.64?
Yes.
And that's excluding the Board of Ed maintenance account and any debt service?
Correct, correct.
And just so I have the numbers right while we're doing it, debt service, how much did that go up percentage-wise?
Debt service is still at the 32.49.
Which was an increase of like almost 800,000.
1.3.
1.3? Yeah. 1.279, if you want.
Wendy, I think the town, when it goes into the motion, they're all free together.
Yeah, it is.
So, I mean, do them individually and then do them in total.
Yeah, they'll have to do it in total.
Yeah, we were...
I've got that, too.
It's two, she's just doing it.
I didn't, yeah.
288, Terry.
288.
288.
I'm sorry, Brad, I think we have the right, Board of Ed maintenance is 480?
Yes.
And that's a, a decrease of what?
4%.
Okay, so we decided we're gonna do a single number in motion, single number going to the town annual meeting?
A combination for the town would be the town, the Board of Ed, uh, maintenance account and debt service.
And that's a total amount of 31,961,043?
Correct.
Do we have a, is that, do we have a motion on that? I would take a motion. Second, anyone second?
Second.
Wasn't there a motion?
Wendy has a motion.
Motion has, Wendy has a motion on the table.
I thought she was just doing the pieces.
Yeah, you had a motion on the floor for the 26.2 million.
So now, instead of doing the 26, instead of doing the pieces, I thought we decided we're gonna do the whole thing.
That's fine.
Whatever you want.
Okay.
What's, what's your thought on that? The motion's gonna have the town budget, which includes blah, blah, blah.
It's fine if you want to amend this, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there was a motion on the table, so if you want, there was a second.
Wendy, do you want to withdraw that motion?
Sure, I'll withdraw.
There's the withdrawal, let's see.
All right.
The new motion is town side, 31,961,043.
Which consists of the Board of Education and maintenance and debt service, and I would either make that or second that.
I will either second that or not necessarily second.
All right, so it's done, guys.
Wendy on the mo, well, we haven't voted, Wendy on the motion.
No, with the first and second.
Sometimes you just gotta take small steps. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The usual two, now you're gonna do Board of Ed.
All right.
When they lower it by 50,000. Well, then they have to do the grand total. Yeah.
Which is?
Okay, ready? I'm ready.
We do, we do the school.
Oh, we don't have, don't we have to do the Board of Ed?
You already did the Board of Ed.
To go to town.
It's only one line, so when you reduce it by 50, you already...
So we don't have to do a motion sending it to the...
So what's, what's the new total for school?
So, I'm sorry, now, what was it?
And the increase in the mill rate is still 0.73? Just, so I have the numbers correct?
Correct, correct.
And I'm sorry, just, what's the Board of Ed increase with the 50 up?
2.88.
The dollar amount though?
Board of Ed is 46,415,473.
And the increase would be what, 1,299?
Say that again.
A million, 200?
Uh...
Can I just, Brad, can I just ask one more question, just so I make sure I have the numbers right?
Yeah.
So the Board of Ed went up 2.88%?
Yes.
Town went up 4.64%?
Uh, for, yes.
Debt service went up 32.49%?
Yes.
And the 460 account went down 4%?
Correct. Thank you. Year-over-year, Bob, uh, Board of Ed increases 1,299,191.
Thank you. So we've got everything right, all the pieces?
You need to make a motion for the total.
Okay.
I moved that the total, uh, budget for 2020, or 1920, whatever, uh, is 78,376,516.
No seconds.
Okay, I don't think we need discussion, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yay.
And then the date for the annual meeting is already set?
April 1st, right? So we just do adjourn now?
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm and see if with Bob Kay, if we can get the percentages of the increases on the town side, so that it's the same as the Board of Ed who have their percentage increases, and whatever revenue detail is available.
Okay, I mean, I'll see if I can get it on that sheet, if we can work that out.
Well, if we get the percentages, couldn't you?
Well, it's gonna get it really tight, because you gotta remember at the town meeting, we've got all the departments in the details for everything.
Right, but could you not, for the departments themselves, having, just like the Board of Ed does, they have all their lines, yes?
Some of the problems we have is moving to this new Open Gov system.
Right.
The departments didn't translate over in the same, uh, columns and the same lines as the previous budget, so some of those percentages might not look exactly the same.
But how come the Board of Ed could get there?
They've been used in a different budget system for over a decade.
How many lines are we talking for departments? I mean, I just think it's important to have the same, you know, apples to apples.
I, I agree, I agree, I'm saying, in translating this over, we ran into some problems.
Oh, okay, I just wanna know if it's possible to do it for that town meeting, that's all I'm asking. All right.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Bob, the town meeting is at the high school?
Yes, it's at the high school.
Seven o'clock, right?
Okay, and a motion to adjourn?
Before.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Hey, Matt, when's your guys' next select meeting?